Good afternoon. At this time, I'd like to call to order the January 24th work session of the County County Board of Education. At this time, Dr. Banks, if you'd lead us in any direction.
Let us pray. Good Father, God, we thank you for this day. Good Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together at this work session. I pray, Father, that you'll be with us, you'll guide us, and you also keep us protected. And I pray, Father, that you open our minds and let us do great things and make great decisions that will impact the lives of our students and all stakeholders in this community. We also, Father, God, may we amplify love in what we do and what we say, and let us be on one accord, and let us work for the good of our environment in which we live in as we impact the lives of our students. This is our prayer. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, we ask that Jesus Christ will hold in right his name. Amen.
Amen. At this time, I need a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Motion by Ms. Miller. Second, Mr. Jowers. Discussion on the agenda. We're prepared. At this time, we will move forward with our minutes from our previous meeting. Any questions, comments about the minutes? From our previous meeting? All right, if there's no amendments to those minutes, we'll place those on the consent agenda for our regular monthly meeting following this meeting. And I do want to welcome Ms. Tyne Wilkerson here for your first official meeting. I know we had a call meeting, but it was our regular monthly meeting. So, welcome, Ms. Wilkerson, and we appreciate you being here and willingness to serve on the Board of Education. We're just honored to have you with us tonight.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you.
That's a heavy seat over there.
I see. Beels in there.
First item of business other than the minutes is the financial report. And Ms. Tracy Yawn, our finance director, has submitted the finance documents out to everyone earlier this week for review. We'll see our end of month fund balance there. Ms. Yawn, you want to review those documents for the board?
Yes, sir. This document reflects our monthly financial report as of December 31st, 2018. Shows our cash balance at $17 million, $577,232.24. We have our revenues at $30 million, $423,006.87. Our expenditures through December, $25 million, $252,487.19, which leaves us with our fund balance of $17 million, $579,872.63.
Thank you. Move over to the comparison report that we like to look at each month. Get us an insight into where we're at this time. Roughly $2.5 million ahead of where we were at this time last year. And then our next item is the fund year-to-date report. Ms. Yawn, you want to point out any details of that?
This report shows our detail of our revenue and our expenditures by category as of December 2018. The first is your revenue, broken down by your specific categories, state and local funds there, and some federal funds. And it shows that we ended December, the end of the revenue of the $30 million, $423,006.87. And then you have your expenditures through December, broken down by the function areas. And that shows our total there, reflecting $25 million, $252,487.19. And then at the end of the report, it shows our fund equity reflected at $17 million,
And right now, it's the period of the year when the fund balance is the highest. But it's really important to keep in mind that when we get to leaner months, and the fund balance works way back down, that our monthly payroll is roughly $4.5 million, $3.5. It seems like a lot, but there would be some sort of emergency crisis or whatnot, you know. That's definitely necessary to carry that, not perceiving the local tax dollars. And then the SPOS report. And you'll see our total for the year. Moving into 2019, will they not? Any questions about this document? If there's no questions about the SPOS, then we have a visitor here with us tonight. Tom?
Yes.
And he's with Raymond James. Do you want to introduce yourself?
I'd be happy.
And talk to your report.
I'm going to hand out three pieces of paper to you. I think you have some version, a similar version of this electronically. I've made an adjustment to one of the schedules, which I will walk you through in just a moment, but I just want a few each to have a, well, not as easier to bump through the paper. I am Tom Owens. I'm with Raymond James. We, as our fiduciary bond and writer, Raymond James and our predecessor firm, for a number of years, I know it leads back to 2005, but probably once before that. This will be the fourth or fifth time we've assisted you with bond issue. We aren't serving, one thing that's important for everybody to think about at the beginning, we aren't serving as a lender to you. Our goal was to go out and find you the lowest cost of funds that we can when we act as your underwriter. We go out and sell these bonds in the publicly, in the public markets, try to get the very best interest rate that we can. What I want to show you tonight is just sort of a look at your sales tax that you just got, and then line that up with where we kind of currently project the bond market to be in terms of your cost of borrowing, and then walk you through a timetable to show you the events from now until when we come back to you with the final pricing of those bonds, and then ultimately to close a bond issued in the school district. The very first sheet is, looks like this. This is just the same report basically that you just got. This gives you a history of your education sales tax, which I know you review every time you come here and sit in these meetings. But essentially, you're at about $5.7 million per year in sales tax collections, and that's the number we want to keep kind of in the back of our minds as we're looking at our debt service cost on our bonds. Anytime that you approve general obligation bonds, they do have the underlying pledge of property tax if the sales tax ever came up short. So, we're very, very careful when we're sizing these bond issues because we know that no one wants to have to enforce a property tax to make the repayment. So, we always take a very close look at approximately, or exactly where the sales tax ends up. We're at about $5.7 million on an annual basis. We are talking about SPOS five. SPOS five collections do not begin until April of 2020. And so, we're talking about the SPOS that was approved this past November. It's not an addition to the one sentence you have, as you know, but it would, it will run as soon as the current sales tax that we're in ends. So, this, we're talking about a five-year period, starting 2020, running out through the spring of 2025. The next page is a current market look. This is a bond issue that is structured to provide $15 million to your project fund. There are a couple of features here. The convention in a municipal bond, and these, these conventions were also outlined in the ballot referendum resolution that you passed last fall. We have to specify exactly how the principal is repaid. Municipal bonds typically have interest semi-annually with a single principal payment. We have put that principal payment in August. That, that matches up with the bonds that you have presently. The other thing about August is we want your sales tax, we want you getting 12 full months of sales tax to match up with one year debt service. We want those to come in completely. So, you can get your last check in April of each year. The state and the rating agencies don't like you to have a principal payment come due during the summer, and so August 1st is where your principal payment's going to do. But if you look at this sheet, you can see five principal payments that come due. You also see the schedule of interest here, and then on the far right, you can see the annual debt service. The annual debt service, based on our current projections, is just under $3.4 million. So, in, in round numbers, you're bringing in about 5.7. We expect your debt payment to be somewhere in the area of 3.4. You can see in the 2021 year, we've made a little adjustment because we're actually going to have a year and a half worth of interest that gets paid, and so we've reduced the principal a little bit in that very first year, just to make those, those total of those payments come to about 3.4 million. The other thing that you will notice in this schedule is there's a column called capitalized interest. One of the particulars of the SPOS rules in the state of Georgia are that we cannot use money from your present SPOS to pay on bonds that weren't contemplated at the time you voted it. So, if you think about the SPOS that's levying and collecting right now, these bonds weren't contemplated when you voted it. That's not a use of your present SPOS. And so, when we do this borrowing, we set aside some money to cover those semi-annual interest payments until 2020 gets here, and those new payments can be covered from the sales tax, the SPOS five as it kicks in. I've restructured this slightly from the schedule you saw there. We don't know precisely the coupon and interest rates on the bonds until we actually go out and market, but I've changed those a little bit to try to reduce that capitalized interest figure some. We've got about half a million dollars. Again, these will all be subject to change until we actually price the bonds. But based on these numbers today, this schedule would deposit $15 million into the project fund, cover that capitalized interest. It would also cover the cost of issuing the bonds. When you do this, you do compensate us as your underwriter. We take those bonds, and it's a portion for us restructuring the bond issue, and then we also compensate salesmen to go out and actively market and sell the bonds. There's some costs associated with getting a bond out to the public markets. We do have the bonds rated by a rating agency that takes a look at the school district and gives you a letter grade that the investors use, a sort of an independent third-party assessment of your financial health. And then also, there's some legal expense. The bonds have to be validated. That process is ongoing right now. There'll be a hearing called the County Superior Report to say that the election was held properly, or your board meetings were held properly, and then the actual documentation of the bond itself. So, based off your last bond issue, we can just sort of use that as our, our go-by in terms of developing a budget for those cost of issuance. We're about 1.9% of the principal amount borrowed. These are premium bonds, so you'll see we're looking at a bond issue of just under $14.5 million. But it produces enough to cover those various things I listed, which is obviously in excess of the principal amount. We expect the investors, you know, based on our current estimates, will pay anywhere from about $102 to $114, $115 on the dollar for your bonds. There's nothing magical about that. It's just a, a convention in the municipal bond market. They're, they're paying you for that tax exempt interest that you get. And y'all interrupt me anywhere you have a question. I have put about one quarter of 1% cushion in our interest rates here. If we were, with that cushion, we're at an all-in cost inclusive of those fees I described of about 2.77%. So, if we were doing this, if I was bringing you a bond issue today, I would have expected the rate to be about 2.52, again, factoring in that you pay cost of issuance on those bonds. So, we think that's a very attractive interest rate, but I did want to leave some room for, you know, the market fluctuate between now and when we might bring you back a, a final bond issue for you to take action on. One thing we have pointed out, and I guess y'all have a slide there, I know there's often some concern about borrowing money that we don't need at all precisely today. Again, your cost of funds we were doing today would be about 2.52. There are places, Georgia Fund, and I'm not offering advice about where to invest the money, but the state government investment pool was paying $235 as of December. So, you're earning quite a bit on that idle cash in comparison to what it's costing you. It's not a total wash in terms of earning 100 cents on the dollar in terms of what you're paying in interest, but you do have the potential to earn a good bit of interest. That's a variable rate, the Georgia Fund one, so it could go up or down. It's certainly not a fixed return there, but your rate on your bonds is fixed. And once you have the sale and we come back to you, you've locked in a cost of funds that won't change for the life of those bonds. The third sheet I gave you was just a timetable. This is a schedule of events, the things we would have to do between now and when we actually close the bond issue. I think maybe the most important for the board is that we would try to get everything done and have a bond sale to come back to your meeting on Thursday, March the 28th, as your regular scheduled bond meeting. At that time, we would come back with the actual results of the pricing, and that's the date where the final interest rates are set, and when the board adopts the bond resolution finalizing the rates in terms. You know, again, based on today's market, I've given you where we think the bonds would price today. That's subject to change up until we're able to bring it back to you, which is a proper procedure some of you may be familiar with that we've done in the past. We then take the bonds, once they're sold, we go to your board commissioners, and we ask them to adopt a tax levy resolution. This is not the commissioner's levying a tax. It's a legal requirement to issue a general obligation bond in the state that, if called upon, again, these have a underlying property tax pledge, and what it is, it's the board of commissioners acknowledging that if you ever called upon them to levy that tax because you don't have the funds to pay your bonds, they would do so. It's a ministerial function of their office, but it's just because they are the tax collecting entity, the same way with your M and O taxes, you set a mileage rate, they collect it. So, it's not asking them to levy your tax. You don't intend to levy the tax, but that resolution has to be in place before you can actually legally issue a general obligation bond. And then following that, we would have your funds deposited into the project fund on April the 10th is our sort of preliminary schedule. We can make adjustments to that if you need to, but this just gives you some idea of the various events that will occur between now and closing the bond issue. Any, any questions? That's sort of the, the meat of what I have to discuss with you. I know that's a lot of information, but I may have to walk you through it.
On the capitalized interest?
Yes, sir.
That column, that's, that's a book, that's actually figured in on the 2.8 under interest?
Yes, you're showing that separate. Yes, I'm showing it separate because I want you to just see that you don't have to come out of pocket to make those payments. That money's, that money's...
That's additional interest. That's included, isn't that key?
That's right. It's just at closing, it's deposited in an account, so that when those first two payments come due, you have it set aside, and you have a way to pay it other than just general funds of the school district. And again, you, you know, my expectation would be, without advising you to do it, that those funds would immediately be invested when you put them there, and hopefully, you know, the U.S. Treasury is earning you 2.5% today. One of the great benefits of being a school district is you're borrowing at a tax exempt basis, and you can turn around and invest in taxable instruments like a U.S. Treasury or an agency or whatever you, you know, whatever was permitted under your legal investment policy. But I would, my expectation would be that you would pretty easily either be able to put that at Georgia Fund one or to purchase a security that matures at the exact time if you wanted to be a little more programmatic and earn essentially what those funds cost you, but very close to that.
Y'all have any more questions? Any more? I warmed them up. Y'all shoot. If you got...
Warming us up in hot boxes for two different...
Well, there, right, Mr. Jowers. We're taking action.
I do have a question. We've, uh...
No, we're not taking action.
What I was going to say, if we adjusted this timeline...
Yes, sir.
A month. Is that something that still fits within the framework of what...
Oh, I think so. I mean, y'all are going to be doing your work behind the scenes on, on moving the process forward.
Yes, sir.
Regardless of the amount that ultimately we would bond, right up until...
Correct. While we're indifferent, it, you know, you have interest rate risk the longer you wait to price it, and so, you know, $15 million, a little move can be a lot. I mean, you know, you're saving, you know, you're saving about $2,000 a day in interest.
You may not need to borrow, but like...
Well, well, I guess my point is a one basis point move on $15 million, that costs you $20,000. You know, I hadn't done that math, but it, it don't take a lot in terms of interest rate movement to eat away the savings that you had by waiting. Not, again, that's, we're indifferent, but I don't, you know, I would hate for a 10 basis point move to cost you more than that month of interest saved is, would be my advice.
But the ultimate amount that you're on is...
Yes, sir. I mean, it would save...
Is there flexibility in that?
You would borrow slightly less capitalized interest for sure if you were to do that. Again, I don't, your concern with capitalized interest is that you were paying interest on interest, obviously, and again, y'all come out six months Treasury and pay you 250, and you just pay 252. I mean, net, it's costing you 2/10ths of 1%. And that, you know, that set of facts, and that, that can change, but it's just not terribly expensive, honestly, to, I mean, you don't ever want to buy, you know, borrow interest and pay interest on that interest, but to the extent that you're turning around and earning basically that same amount, it's, it's really not terribly expensive to you.
Well, I guess to answer the question, if the board desires that we push the timetable back, I certainly would do that.
Well, my, my question has got to do with impacting projects that we've got there. You know, we knew we were going to have some projects that overlap the SPOS.
Yes.
And we don't want to, you know, if there's a certain timeline, we've got to work at the high school. Is there a certain timeline where you need...
Well, that's what... Ms. Yawn, do you have a perspective on that?
Yeah. When the school gets out in May, you know, we wanted to go ahead and look at, you know, beginning the bid process, you know...
Yeah. We'd like to get that work out for bid and have that ready to lit and good shelves ready as soon as school's out.
That's what the board...
But we'll need to know we have the money to be able to do it. So, that April timetable really helps us do that.
Well, I think we're just, we're talking about getting together the ninth.
Yeah.
I think we just have a look at, you know, what projects have we got out there like that that's got to be done. We don't have a choice. Let's get, find out what we actually need, and let's kind of go from there. I mean, right, I mean, you know, like high school, we throw our numbers out, what's got to be done this summer, or what's not going to get done this summer, you know? Let's, let's get all that together, look at it, and see how much you're...
Will that affect this timetable?
We can start work, and the thing is, if we start work and you tell us, you know, a week before we release the marketing stuff out to the market, you know, a couple days before, hey, we're going to wait a month, there's no problem with that. We just sit on it for a month, unless you have some change in your finances without having to anticipate. So, no, we can, we could start a lot of this process, and then you tell us not only, hey, we want to wait a month, it's like, hey, our dollar amount we need...
Yeah. That's right.
It doesn't have to be certain till...
And we could still...
When we're actually...
Well, I think that's kind of what my deal is. I mean, I think like $15 million is just a round of numbers at this point. I don't think we really sat down and went through and tried to figure out what we actually need. There's no point in borrowing, you know, our bond at $15 million if y'all need that. And that's, that's what I'm saying. We need to look and see exactly what, what we needed. I mean, I understand we can put it in either U.S. Treasury or Georgia one and make some interest back, but if we never needed it to begin with, there's no point in borrowing a month.
I just want to see what we actually need before we go ahead and do all this.
I agree with you.
And if we got to meet the ninth, you know, that's the prime time to get together and let, let's see, you know, do we need 50? Maybe we do. Maybe we need eight. I don't know.
Well, while we're talking about it and we go ahead, I've got the night down. Can y'all look at your calendars and see and let me know if it's Saturday the ninth, February ninth, we can get together, so...
I'd also tell you, like, and talking about, I mean, I don't know if, if you would be the one to get that forward, or Tracy or who, but, you know, we, we did this with the last SPOS. You know, we bonded that money, so at this point, we should know what it cost us in interest. We should know what, what we got out of any investments we're, you know, making at this point.
Oh, sure.
Can we get some of that figure up and see, you know, what that truly cost us?
And you had a lot, a much different situation...
Oh, we did. We did. It's not going to be apples to apples exactly.
Right. Can you go back to that? I'll show you what it's like.
But it'll still give me a good idea.
Go down, sorry, the other way. And so, this is, this is sideways, but the last bond issue you did was in 2015, and so, this is, when you took that money, if it sat at Georgia Fund, you were earning somewhere around 20 basis points on it. Today, you're earning 235 basis points on it, and that's been the change in the last, you know, I guess it's January 16th, that's gone up about 200 basis points. So, you have a little different dynamic in terms of what your funds are costing you versus what you, but again, borrow money to dump it in the bank at any reason...
That's what I'm saying. I just mean, that, that change that... I may not be perfect with numbers, but it still give me an idea of how much that we realistically actually have, be able to put in Georgia one, because, you know, if we borrow a month, because we need it, so it's not going to help us...
Oh, correct.
So...
Right. And I just don't want you borrowing a bunch of money that don't stay here.
I don't want to say it. I just want to get that. So, you know, it sounds good that we can earn this money, really, it's not going to work. We don't have a lot of time for it to sit around anyway.
Correct.
So, that's just some things I would like to be able to look at.
And I tell you, we, we've been lucky to work for you for a long time, and y'all don't keep in mind this back because we come down here and pressure you to borrow money before you want to or more than you need. So, don't, don't take any of my comments to be meaning that. We want you to borrow what you need, and we want to help you get the best cost...
Well, and I think that's just what we're looking, I mean, like I said, we just got this SPOS passed. We've got a few projects that do have to be done, and we're just trying to figure out, like I said, I think what's got to be done and what doesn't.
Yes, sir.
Because we are 16 months out from, from drawing money on this new SPOS. I don't think we really want to get too far out there, but there are some things that do need to...
Oh, absolutely.
...be taken care of now. We just need to figure out which projects follow which category.
Right. And the other moving part about that, you know, we talked to a lot of folks about, is just thinking, particularly with your architects and your construction managers, they want is, you know, what's that project cost me today? Where do you project that project to cost me? I put it out a year? And sometimes you can't just do, you know, there's only so much projects you can do. But what we like to ask you to do is, you know, think about what it costs you to borrow versus what it costs you to wait.
Well, we did that last time.
5% wait a year.
We had a lot of big projects last time, and that was, that was some of the thought. These projects had to get done. It was probably going to cost us more if we waited, but we were also closer to that SPOS. We're a year earlier now, and we don't necessarily have as many projects that, that have to be done right now, so it's a little different situation. But that, that was what we ran to last time.
You know, I don't disagree. I'm just giving that to you for your consideration.
Yes, sir. Any more questions? Great, great conversation.
Absolutely. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, sir.
And everybody's got my number. If something comes up after the meeting, any of you feel free to call me. I'm happy to talk with any of you individually. I'm happy to talk with any of you individually if you want to. Thank you all.
You just can't talk to three of us at the same time.
That's right. We won't get on top of it.
I understand when Mr. Lasky got orbit, the, what was filed is on the ballot and will be in the paper next couple of weeks. It says up to twenty million dollars, so that doesn't mean it is twenty million dollars. So, didn't know what you think y'all done. But that will be coming up February 4th.
Uh, that takes care of bond options for East SPOS five and moves us into the out-of-state And we have a couple of trips on out-of-state travel. We've got the Museum of Science History, fifth grade from Ambrose will be going, fifty-nine students, February twelfth. And we've got East Side, hundred and five students will be going on April fourth. Any questions about out-of-state travel? Next item is pre-K delegation of authority. I'm recommending the approval of the delegation of authority from school district to Board of Education. The board consensus, the delegation of authority will be included in the consent agenda for vote at the regular monthly meeting immediately following this meeting. The summary is in order to be compliant with federal law right from the start, Georgia Department of Early Care and Learning is reviewing all pre-K grant agreements. All pre-K grant agreements issued to programs with the legal name listed as Board of Education will be reviewed as grant agreements must reflect a legal name of the school district. Really a clerical type change that the right from the start has to make. And, April, do you have anything to add to this?
It doesn't change the way we operate the program. It's just a legal technicality, I think.
All right. If there's no questions, we will place that on the consent agenda for the regular monthly meeting. Our legal counsel has reviewed this and actually helped April craft it, so. And this will meet the requirements right from the start. Disproportionality determination. We have Dr. Tanya Johnson and Dr. Dana Vickers here with us tonight from the Special Education Department. And, Dr. Johnson, you will tell us about our latest report from the state.
Well, good evening.
Good evening, again.
I just wanted to share with you a recent report that we received from the Georgia Department of Education. The Individuals with Disabilities Act 2004 requires states to identify local education agencies as having disproportionality in several areas. And the areas include identification, placement, and discipline of students with disabilities, also racial and ethnic groups in special education in all disability areas and specific disability categories, in addition to the suspension and expulsion of students with disabilities. And I'm just pleased to report that Coffey County has no significant disproportionality, nor disproportionate representation or significant discrepancy in these areas. So, this is a good report, and we certainly appreciate our principals, our staff, and our support staff in helping us to obtain this good report. This is not listed, but I also want to mention that we were also recently assessed in the area of transition, which is another area of compliance. And it's looking at appropriate measurable post-secondary goals for our students with disabilities, and this is something that is looked at annually. And we were also determined to be compliant in this area as well. So, we just thank everyone for their support in helping us to get the reports in those areas. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
I'm gonna ask this the right way, I guess. Dr. Vickers, Dr. Johnson, either one can answer. Is there an expectation on the timeline of testing a student once that student has been identified that they need to be tested?
State guidelines indicate that once the parent signs the consent for evaluation, we have sixty calendar days to get that child evaluated. That does, if there are like long holiday periods, like Thanksgiving, Christmas, those type of dates, holidays, those are reduced from that, but pretty well sixty days for the child that the parent signs consent.
Would you happen to know what our average is here in the county? Is it by grade level, or is it by, you know, K-5 or middle school or high school or the different parameters that you try to meet?
It's just whoever is referred, basically, they come, the files come into the office and they're put in the waiting list. We have grade school psychologists, so each of them's our fourth schools. And they basically do it, you know, in the order it comes in unless there is an emergency case that we do need to, you know, consider putting front of anyone.
Are you being efficient with just three?
We could always use more help, but realistically, we had difficulty finding that third person this past year. We just don't have a lot of school psychology graduates out there looking to come to South Georgia. But if you all could find this one, we would welcome another.
Well, I guess my question would be, if you increase capacity, could you increase your turnover rate on...
We, we are back to, right now, with the evaluations that we have. But yes, we definitely could increase our rate if we had additional help. Prior to this year having three, we contracted out with a retired psychologist who came over a few days a week and helped. And that, you know, helped temporarily, but we do need that full-time person, which is also helpful, but again, years ago, we had four psychologists. So, if we could find the fourth, that would be, you know, great.
Are you seeing an increase, based on your experience in your tenure, 2018, 19 student versus 2000, 2001 student? Are you seeing an increased need, or is it...
For services?
For services, yes.
I would say so. Actually, our preschool numbers have drastically increased over the last three to four years. We primarily have one psychologist that just works, well, not just works, but works very heavily and closely with the Baby Skin Weight Program and Children's Health who makes referrals prior to the child being the age of three. And those numbers have really increased in the past three to four years. So, not only with the students that are already in the school setting that are referred to us, but before they even get to school, they're being referred. And they have significant disabilities, a lot of those.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Vickers. Coffey County Academies update. To present to the board tonight, have a discussion about the academies and the work that we're doing at Coffey High School and at the ninth grade academy and at the Career Academy. And just talk through that with the board tonight and answer any questions that you may have. So, we'll start it off with, with our first slide there, and we can move through that. Chan, do you have a clicker or how does that work? There we go. We know our, our mission is destination graduation for college, career, and life. And our vision is an equitable and excellent education for every student. And you notice that we added that piece, creating a stronger community through an equitable and excellent education for every student. And that, that was an outgrowth of our strategic planning that we went through a few months ago, and, and so, that's our mission and our vision as a school system and what we use as our guiding principles. And one thing about it, you can ask young people in Coffey County what the mission is of the school district, and a lot of them can tell you. Dr. Evans, was that true? We went out to one of the schools, which school was it? You asked.
The middle school was very adamant to keep commission students.
Yeah. We had about ten middle schools around the table, and we asked them what the mission is of the school system. They all said destination graduation. And then we asked them, should we change it? This was, and they just looked at us confused, they knew. So, what we've been doing with that, and that's going back, what, ten, twelve, fifteen years, destination graduation, has really stuck with our young people. Now, Ford Next Generation, we partnered with Ford Next Generation to develop our strategic plan, and it centers around three strands. The first strand is to transform teaching and learning. So, we wanna, we wanna transform our teaching and learning and make sure that we're kinda changing our strategies based on our young people. We know young people are much different than they were, as Mr. Preston alluded to a while ago, our young people are much different than they were twenty years ago.
Oh, no, I didn't allude, I asked.
Yeah. So, it, we need to make sure that our teaching and learning strategies are in line with today's youth. So, transforming teaching and learning is the first strand. The second strand is to transform the K-12 experience. And when we talk about strand two in relation to our grades nine through twelve, we're talking about transforming the secondary school experience. So, transforming the high school experience for our young people and making sure that we're aligning what we're doing at the high school is relevant to our students and that they understand why they're at high school. Making sure our structures at the high school lend themselves to our, our present-day students. And then the third strand is transforming civic and business partnerships and making sure that we are transforming our business and civic partnerships and, and really bringing those businesses and industries into the fold and, and making sure that, that our business and industry partners are part of what we're doing. We don't necessarily want money from them, but we want them to come into the schools and be a part of what we're doing. And to help our young people see what a banker does, to see what somebody in sales for the major industry does, to see what somebody who runs a small business does and is an entrepreneur, to understand what somebody does with their skill sets and their profession and their career, and understand what somebody may do in the agribusiness or agri-insurance industry. But bring real-life people, business folks, into our schools and help our young people see what they can be with their life. We heard somebody say, if you don't see it, you can't be it. And a lot of our young people don't have a clue about what's going on outside of their house and what's going on outside of those school doors. So, we wanna bring those civic and those industry folks into our schools and really partner with them so that our young people understand what opportunities are out there. Dr. Banks had a conversation recently with a young person. He said they were a college-age person and, you know, asking what they were gonna do, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but, you know, a college-age person, he asked him, and about the degree they're getting, and they said, well, I'm gonna earn twenty thousand dollars a year, and that's great. But if you're going to college, in our conversation, you know, we hope that you're gonna set your goals higher than that if you're investing in a college degree. And the takeaway was this young person really didn't know what they were gonna do and how much they were gonna make and what their goals were in their career. So, we wanna make sure before we send a young person off to college and they take out loans for fifty, sixty, seventy, a hundred thousand dollars for the college loans, that they're getting the degree they can use and, and hopefully make a decent wage. So, we want our young people prepared. And with those three strands, we really believe focusing on those things, that we're gonna, we're gonna do the work and we're gonna do it well. Focus area two in our strategic plan, and I don't have a copy with me, but I did include it on the slide, you'll see deals with workforce and life. And our strategy two is transforming the secondary schools to themed academies with students scheduled in cohorts and teachers of CTA and academics partnering to implement best practices. So, if you open our strategic plan, you're gonna see that, and that's, that's what we're working on. And we have a focus group. Dr. Joy Perrin is, is heading up our strategic planning activities in our school system, and she couldn't be here tonight, Dr. Perrin couldn't be here, so I'm kinda standing in for Dr. Perrin. But she is our point person on the strategic planning work, and she's done an excellent job of guiding the work. And then we have our focus team, which consists of our Wiregrass Regional College and Career Academy principal, Pam Smith, and then we have Abe from the ninth grade academy, and we've got Rhonda Dorsey here from, from Coffey High School. So, we will present to you tonight our plans for academies here in Coffey County and where we hope to take our nine through twelve schools in relation to those three strands that you see on the screen. All right? Now, we wanted to share with you the Nashville story, this academy model. While we've had a ninth grade academy here, we've had a career academy here, we've not truly followed this wall-to-wall academy concept, and that's where we wanna go. So, we're gonna share with you a video from Ford Next Generation and from the school system in Nashville, Tennessee.
In 2005, things were pretty bad in Nashville. We had a graduation rate around fifty-eight percent.
Federal accountability law, No Child Left Behind, was breathing down the necks of a lot of our school principals.
They weren't hitting district standards, they weren't hitting state standards. We had students that did not have hope.
That's when we knew that we had to create a transformation that was founded in relationships.
It took the Chamber of Commerce, alignment Nashville, Pencil, Ford Next Generation Learning, of course, MNPS is a partner, in order to make this happen.
We saw the academy model as a real opportunity to truly transform education and make it more authentic and real for students.
My pathway lets me be me and be creative.
I feel like I've become more accepting, more aware, more open-minded, and more kind.
I think without it, I wouldn't be where I am today. I wouldn't know what I wanna do. I would be lost.
Every day, I just come to school with a purpose.
We've been able to help other communities learn from our lessons, and we've really been able to see communities all over the country implement academies with our support.
Ford Motor Company Fund had recognized that we couldn't just focus on transforming teaching and learning, but we also needed to think about how the system needed to change and how we would engage the larger community in this important transformation for students. Once we began to look at all those practices, we broke them into these three strands. The first strand is transforming teaching and learning, and this is all about true engagement for the student. It's about students having a much better idea about what they wanna do in their future, and their academics are gonna be taught through the lens of something that really inspires them and engages them.
Everything from the medical sciences to engineering to mechatronics, anything that is high demand in our area.
I now know what I wanna study in college already. I know what job I wanna get after college. I'm already prepared for my future. I'm already thinking about my mid-thirties when I'm seventeen years old.
Secondly, is transforming the school structure, and that's changing these large, comprehensive high schools, breaking them down into smaller learning communities so that you have schools within a school based on themes or career interest.
Students will spend three years together in their classes, and many of their teachers will be the same teachers throughout those three years. Through that process, it does begin to feel like a family.
Because I've been with my teachers...
Because I've been with my teachers for so long, they understand me, they know what I need to succeed.
Strand three is really about how do you engage larger communities? So this is transforming business and civic engagement. We know that business and industry employers play a huge role in supporting schools. And when they engage in the development of the academy model, they're at the table when the academies are developed, they become co-owners.
Typically, we recruit a partner because of a specific need, but then once the partner gets engaged and works hands-on with the students and the teachers, then they end up telling us what the students and the teachers need.
Our industry professionals sat down with the teachers, helped develop the curriculum and online materials for the teachers and the students.
If you were to look at the list of the top 10 employers in Nashville, the majority of them are serving as academy partners. And that's who our students are getting to network with, that's who they're getting internships with, that's who they're going to do job shadowing experiences with, that's who's coming and being part of our career exploration fair.
When students come into an academy, they select a program of study or a pathway, it's almost like a major in a college. After a student selects their academy during their 10th grade year of experiential learning, they go on an industry-related field trip. During the 11th grade year, after they've learned some content, they've been exposed with a field trip, they're matched one-on-one to do a job shadow. And then finally, in their senior year, they're going to do a senior capstone project where they would do extended research on that career.
This is where the academy team of teachers, the math, English, social studies, science, and the career and technical education teacher, as a team, they would shadow a business during the summer over the course of a week. They would learn about how their academic standards are being applied in the real world of business. At the end of that experience, that team would come together and create an interdisciplinary project based on that experience that they would implement in their classroom in the academy.
Because every student usually asks, as we all did in high school, why am I taking this? What relevance will it have? Will I ever use it? Unbeknownst to them, they will.
We use blueprints to calculate the angle of a roof slope. So we related several things in their math class to what we do every day in the electrical business. And at the end, the greatest thing was one of the young ladies came up, looked me in the eye and said, this was fun.
My least favorite class is physics, but when it's talked through the lens of audio production, it helps me remember it and it helps me understand it just a little bit
When you're working towards your passion and you're able to earn certifications, you're able to earn college credits, when you graduate, you have multiple options.
Industry partners are now working in a very close relationship with students to tutor and mentor them on specific industry exams.
I'm able to take all the advanced placement classes, the Cambridge classes, and actually graduate with my A's Cambridge diploma without an issue, and also take all the academy classes I want as well.
I'm a football player at Canyon Ridge, I have a 4.2, and I have AP and honors classes.
So when I graduate high school, I am looking to have around 21 hours of college credit.
When we started, I would look on Edutopia, and I would see one part of a school that had an academy, what those students got to do, what those business partners did for them, and it was maybe 50 students that were being impacted. What's happened here is that there's thousands doing what those 50 students got to do. That's the power of it.
I will say that we sent a team from Coffey County back in the fall. A group of about 10 folks went from the high school and visited their high schools. And we went to, I went to two different high schools. And what they showed on the video, they're really doing. And it's been transformational. They're about 12 years into it, and there were groups there from all over the country to see what they've been doing in Nashville, and then they're doing that same kind of work back in their districts. I was asked, you know, at one point, what other school systems are seeing results? And I was, so I did a little research and I discovered that Gwinnett County has five or six of their high schools that they have converted to wall-to-wall academies. Lanier High School that put us out of the football playoffs is an academy model school now. They have four different academies at Lanier High School. And Gwinnett traditionally is recognized as one of the top districts in the state. So they were recognized in 2010, 2014 as one of the top urban districts in the country. So they usually, if they invest in something, they do something. It's a pretty good initiative. Also, Ware County has been involved with the academies. I did a review of what they call a GAPS review, it's kind of like a Saks visit about 10 years ago, 12 years ago, at Ware County, when they were just getting started with the academy approach there. And so they've been involved with it for a number of years. And then Camden County, we were fortunate to send a group to Camden and look at Camden. And I had an opportunity to serve on the Saks team doing their review last year, and they've been doing the academy approach for about 10 years. And Camden's achievement is really, really high. And they're recognized statewide for their academic achievement, and Ware has really strong academic achievement. So there are communities who are seeing results with this academy approach. Now, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Morris, who is here from George Washington Harvard Freshman Academy. So once again, y'all are warmed up, y'all ask whatever questions y'all have. If y'all have any questions to me, please do. But we wanted this to be a question and answer session so that everybody understands where we're at.
How's it going? Talked to five families, talked 15-year-olds.
Winners to be difty.
So I'm just going to give you a quick kind of rundown of the academy concept from the freshman side. If you've had a kid in education recently, you kind of have an idea of the changes that we've gone through and what kids are able to take and how much earlier they're able to take it. For example, in 2013, when I went to the freshman campus, I think we had one student who took a college class online in our library. Last year, we had 22 students that took sociology through Wiregrass. They sent a professor over and those kids took that course. If you've gone to any graduation over the last three or four years, you've heard, you know, so-and-so graduated last Saturday from South Georgia College with an associate's degree, and that number just keeps going up. You know, the first time somebody did it, everybody was falling out. Now it's like, all these kids are taking stuff so much earlier that they have the opportunity to get these things knocked out. But what we've noticed is, it's great to have the opportunity, but we haven't quite given them the opportunity to explore and research what's out there and what they might want to do. And they're having to make really important decisions really, really early. So one of the things that we're looking at for the freshman campus, we are already kind of set up like an academy as far as how we schedule kids and how our teachers work with each other. The thing that we're looking at is a course called Freshman Seminar that's going to give those students an opportunity, it'll be a semester-long course, just like any other course, an hour and a half in their day, where they'll have an opportunity to really look at what it is they think they want to do, what it takes to get to that point, and what they would need to, you know, the strengths and weaknesses that they have to get to where they want to go. So we're in the process now of creating some new curriculum with our teachers on campus. We're going to work with Coffey High School to kind of have an idea of what those 12th, 11th, and 10th grade teachers are seeing that our kids are weak in, and where we can strengthen that. We'll do that through a U-science assessment that our kids are already taking, which shows ability and interest levels and kind of guides a student. If you're interested in this, this is kind of, you know, based on this assessment, we think this might be a good fit for you. It doesn't mean the kid has to go off and do that. It just gives them, you know, an idea of what they may be fit for. We're going to do some college visits and some business visits, we're going to have a career fair. Our freshman seminar teachers will bring in guest speakers. We're going to go over employability skills. Every meeting that we had when we were going through our strategic plan with Ford Next Generation, business folks kept saying, you know, we need kids and we need workers to come to work on time, to, you know, all these different things that right now, unless it's a part of your standard, a teacher doesn't have time to teach it, you know? And so what we've said is, we've done our, kind of our teachers a disservice in that they just don't have time to teach them the stuff that we know our kids need. So this class for us will give them the opportunity, the teachers the opportunity to genuinely give some real-world experience to some of these kids. Because like Dr. Lee said, unless they've been on a trip with one of our schools, a lot of these kids don't leave Coffey County. And so if they plan on going to Coffey County, they need to have some, they need to have some skills, and it's our responsibility, I think, to give them the time and the direction. So from a freshman side, that's kind of what, you know, the change that you're going to see at the freshman campus. Again, we're already kind of laid out like an academy, you know, if you do some research on academies, and our kids can only, you know, they're going to take what's there for them to take. They're there with us for a year to mature a little bit, to kind of get an idea of what it's like to be in high school, and then we're going to usher them off to 10th grade, get them to agree. So I know that's kind of a quick overview, but does anybody have any questions for me from the freshman side?
Do you have any classes that we're going to go away with or you can teach freshman campus?
We won't, we won't actually do away with any course. What Mr. Reiner and I and Dr. Cummings and I have been kind of looking at is, what courses are we going to keep on the freshman campus versus what courses are going to move to the high school? So the courses that we'll continue to keep, and I wrote them down, sorry to mess this up, we'll keep ROTC, we'll keep band, and we'll keep chorus, we'll keep Spanish on our campus, we'll keep teammates, we'll keep journalism, we'll keep year-long mat, year-long ELA, RPE, and AG. And so those courses will stay on our campus. The two that are moving, the three that are moving right now would be Intro to Digital Technology, Intro to Business Technology, and Food Nutrition and Wellness. And so, and then a lot of that is, me and Mr. Reiner and Dr. Cummings are all still kind of trying to work to figure out how it's going to look because it is so new, but those courses will stay with us on our campus.
Well, I know that I'm new to this, and I'm trying to cope a lot of things here, but, you know, when you say that the teachers don't have time to teach the kids, you know, how the kids are supposed to learn.
That's a good question. What we're saying is, like, things like employability skills and stress coping skills and study skills and all that, if it's not directly tied into a standard for a teacher, so let's say a math teacher. If a math teacher doesn't have a standard that says how to deal with stress, then they're expected to teach their standard. What we're going to do is, our freshman seminar teachers are going to create standards for our students that are geared towards dealing with stress and employability skills, and where do you want to go to college, and what do you want to be when you grow up, kind of thing. And they're going to actually have time, and the kids are going to have time in their schedule to really, really look through what they think they want to do. Right now, it's hit or miss. You know, if you're in, if you're in a CTA class, there are some employability skills, and there are some note-taking skills and that sort of thing, but if every kid doesn't take a CTA class, they miss out on that. And so like I said, we're asking them to make big decisions, and we need to give them time to kind of really think through that process. So I don't know if that, if that helps you clarify or not.
If I could interject, the freshman seminar will be one of the classes that the freshmen take. So they take four classes first semester, four classes second semester, they take eight classes in a year. One of those eight classes will be freshman seminar, where they'll teach specifically these job skills and even, we talked about academic honesty and...
Some of the budget check book. I mean, the stuff that we keep hearing folks say, like, why don't kids, why don't kids learn this anymore at school? You know, we're kind of in a rock and hard place where we're required by the state and federal government to teach, you know, certain things. But we understand that a kid needs more than just algebra one to be successful in life. So what this will give us is the opportunity to have that time in their schedule. It'll basically become their fifth core class. So they've got their four core classes, it'll just become the fifth core, and everybody will have to take it.
How did you determine which classes you were going to move? How'd you come around? I mean, did any one less important than the other? Did you look at that or?
Well, first, we had to look at requirements, state requirements, to be able to participate in certain activities. For example, to be a member, an acting member of the FFA, for example, you have to be enrolled in a HAG course. So we couldn't, we couldn't say, well, you'll just take HAG in 10th grade, because we've got kids that want to participate in goat shows and livestock judging and all that sort of stuff. So for them to be able to continue to do that, we had to offer that course on our campus where, like our FBLA club is an after-school club that doesn't require that same, you know, the kid doesn't have to be on a roster to be able to participate, they can participate in any of that stuff. So that was, you know, that was kind of how we went about, you know, trying to figure out exactly what we were going to keep on campus and what we were going to move. But again, we didn't drop anything, it was just, you know, certain things are going to stay with us and certain things will be picked up out of the high school.
The ninth graders can't, you know, play FBLA, what if they want to be involved?
Yes, sir, yeah. Now, right now, we've got a, but all of our buses go to the high school. And so all of our kids that are participating in anything after school at Coffey High, unless their parents come pick them up, they get on the bus, they go to Coffey High, and they go, and like student council and that sort of stuff, they'll participate in those sort of things there at Coffey High. So they'll still have all that access. And what we've talked about doing is having a point person on our campus, so that we'll have an FBLA point person at the freshman campus so that there can be some communication between the adults to make sure, you know, all the information gets relayed.
What about the family suicide, the path problem? Do you all have a representative for that?
Yes, sir, that's the FCC LA club, yeah, we'll have somebody for that too. Same way that we do, like I said, with student council. We've got a student council rep on our campus, and they have student council meetings, but they also have a larger student council at the high school, and our kids will go out there and be a part of that so that, you know, so that there's some bridge.
We're not losing any teaching positions, huh? If anybody moves to the high school, you replace them at the ninth grade.
Yes, sir. Yes, we'll have to, because, you know, for everybody to take that course, I'll give you an example, P and L, we, everybody, it's a state-required course, you have to take it, and we offer it at freshman campus. So it takes, you know, three teachers for us to ten staff for everybody. Same way with science, we've got three science teachers, they teach all of our kids physical science. So it'd be the same way with freshman seminar, yes, sir.
I think that was, I guess, the big, over the last few weeks, we've had some people weren't real happy about it because they felt like they were going to lose, you know, the HAG class or this or that, you know? And my deal was always, I don't, you know, I like the idea of this, I think there's a lot of good things in it. I don't have a problem with incorporating it with this stuff. You know, if we want to take an HAG class and incorporate some of the guest speakers, employability, and all that stuff can be incorporated into that. You know, we've got this thing broken down into four things, agriculture, mechanical, STEM, youth health, you know? If you want to take those sectors and what kids, you know, incorporate that into them, I don't think anybody really had a problem with that, as opposed to they felt like you were going to take, you know, the HAG class out in ninth grade and it wasn't going to be there. You know, I don't think anybody had a problem incorporating this in there with it as much as they felt like it was just going to be gone.
And I think probably what happened was, when the crew got back from Nashville, you know, Nashville does it a certain way, and we've said, you know, we don't, we don't have to adapt what they do, adapt what they do, we can adapt what we want.
Circle of y'all.
Oh, I know, that's what I'm saying, is that we, you know, when our crew came back, we realized that there are some things that they do great, but we do better, you know? So we're not trying to totally throw out everything that we do. But we do, and I, I mean, I've got a ninth grader, and I feel that we owe them the opportunity to be able to do some more research, because right now, they just don't have the time in their schedule, they really don't.
I also want to say that I think everybody would agree that if there's a way to improve these classes or incorporate some of this into it, I don't think anybody's really got a problem, they were just afraid that we were getting to get it. And I think that's where your issues came in, with people not being happy with this. I think that there's a lot of good, you know, I mean, you sit there and read this list, there's a lot of good things there that I think these kids need to learn, need to work on, you know, if we incorporate them in some things we're doing.
I'm sorry, could, refresh on the three, of the three classes that are moving, that you're planning to move? What were those again?
Intro to digital technology, intro to business technology, and food nutrition and wellness.
Okay, so, that being said, seems to me like those sorts of courses would be enhanced by a student, having a seminar-type class and saying, these are some career paths for you. You don't need them right now, but when you get to high school, that might be of interest to you, that this academy might be more interesting to you than this one. Because to me, it's about the engagement, it's about, I think we've done a great job with Career Academy. I was at a government council meeting this past week, and I'm not sure, it was at a different campus, but the CCRBI scored, congratulations, that was, I know what it was, but I also know that it was within the expectations, which was where we, you know, in the past, hadn't gotten there. But, Dr. Cummings, I don't know if you're speaking in high or not, but I get a sense that we've kind of started plateauing at the graduation rate. Just...
No, we're going to keep going.
No, we're going to keep going.
I know, I know, I'm not saying that, I'm just, what I'm, what I'm trying to make is, if we continue to do the same old thing, we're going to continue to get the same results. And I think this is an opportunity, I think, young people want to be challenged, they want to be engaged, they want, they want school to be fun, they don't want school to be something they dread. So I, that's just, I, I like the idea of this, is that it focuses their engagement, their interest, but the seminar piece helps them figure that out.
Yeah, and we understand that one of the most important parts is to have people to teach it, that love, you know, I mean, you've really got to want to sit around with 30, 15-year-olds, and, and pick their brain, and have them think beyond, you know, well, my mom works here, that's where I want to work, you know, what do you really want to do, but what is it going to take to get there? One of the aspects of this, too, is, they're going to have to decide what academy they're going to go to at Coffee High School. It's not fair to drop them out there as 10th graders, since they just got picked one, they're going to need some time to really say, alright, there's four academies, this sounds good, but I don't even know what, what jobs are in that field. And so that'll give them time to really work through that whole process. And so when they pick their academy, there should be more of them. So that should, it kind of, all of it should work its way to a better, informed student at Coffee County.
But at the same time, each academy's still going to have the nuts and bolts of, of what we're required to do to graduate.
Absolutely, yes. It'll just be able to focus whatever, throw the lens of whatever that, you know, those four academies end up being.
What?
Thank y'all. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
If you've got any more questions, feel free to call us, or whatever, I know this-
We'll do that, yes, sir.
We'll be waiting on that.
We've got Dr. Cummings.
Good evening, uh, a lot of what I'm going to talk about has been said, and I'll try to expand on it. First of all, let me just say what the academy is not, and I think it's important to understand what it's not. It is not going to become a vocational high school, even though that'll be, have some elements that won't become that. We will still have honors classes, we'll still have the E2 classes, we'll still have student enrollment, we'll still have work-based learning, we're going to have all those things to make up a comprehensive high school. So those things, so please rest assured, those things are not going anywhere. So I want to rest, you know, you know, kind of put that out there. But what we are doing, we're trying to get students to become more intentional in their thinking about career path. Now, when I say a career path, it's about the process, it's not necessarily the destination, because we know students change their minds. Students have changed their minds in high school, they have changed their minds in college, adults have changed their minds in life, and changed career fields. But we're trying to get them to understand and establish it's a process for helping them to make a good, informed decision, so they can learn what they don't want to do, but what is what they want to do. So we started out this process, we'd had a trip to Nashville, Nashville, Tennessee, not Nashville, Georgia, and we used to, you know, and we tried to see what they did, you know, like we said earlier, just because they did it that way, I don't mean we have to do it that way here, because there's all, there's also academies already functioning, well, in the state of Georgia. You know, so we, we visited some of those high schools, in particular Camden County High School, this, you know, they're about 10 years in the academy process. The near high school, where we played in the football playoffs, they're into the academy process, as well as many others around the state of Georgia, and also in the state of Florida. So this is not a new phenomenon, this is not new, but I think it's something that our young people can benefit from. As was said earlier, we do a lot of things well here. You know, our graduation rate's approaching 90%, we have a robust dual enrollment, robust work-based learning, our extracurricular activities are doing well, all of our sports. So we don't want to fix what ain't broke, but we can do better, like Matt Preston said, you know, we want to keep getting better, we want to keep looking for that next 2, 3, 4, 5%. You know, our goal is obviously to graduate everybody. So we've got some work to do, even though we're approaching 90% in our graduation rate, there's still room for improvement. But anyway, how the formation of this, this academy's at Coffee High School, in terms of what academies are going to be, we're basing our workforce projections for the next 10 to 15 years, and we've got that from the, from the Chamber of Commerce here, and so we've got three areas there that they kind of said are going to be some high-demand areas, not only in Coffee County, but in our region, you know, manufacturing, healthcare, and agriculture. That should not surprise anyone. Like, when we go to agriculture, there's a lot of industry around agriculture that's not just out on a tractor in a field. There's a lot of things that many of us, I mean, we want to make sure the students are aware of, so when they decide to make that decision, and all the industries around healthcare, it's more than just being a nurse, manufacturing, it's more than working on the line in one of the local manufacturing organizations around here. So this data came from the workforce projections. Now, those, those academies, and all these are tentative now, these are tentative academies, but you've got to start somewhere, you've got to create some momentum, because, you know, if you don't start moving, you never get anywhere. It's much easier to redirect once you have some momentum going, and you're moving towards something. So those are just four of the tentative academies that we've talked about, you know, agriculture, mechanical, and STEM, Performing Arts and Graphic Designs. Obviously, we've got that big, huge, beautiful Performing Arts building growing up, so we want to try to make use of that, although it may not be as many jobs in that area, in this area, but that is a high-interest area for a lot of our students, because obviously all you've got to do is look at band and chorus. So what you try to do, you try to balance demand, you know, projections, and you try to also address the needs of your students. Health and Human Services and Education, we've got to grow some teachers now, because I ain't going to work forever. You know, so, you know, all of us going to retire one day, so we've got to have somebody, train somebody to take our place, so we would be negligent, our duties as educators, if we don't think about trying to prepare those futures educators to step in our roles and not take our place. Health and Human Services, we all need great healthcare, we've got a hospital there, which will, she'll be calling on to be a partner in this process. Government, business, and law, you know, and so, and there's, and there's a lot of umbrella, those are the overall umbrellas, and there's a lot of things that are going to fall into these academies. Now, we have, you know, touch base with our, our local business and industry, and gotten their input, as well the input from other stakeholders moving forward. Now, we're still in the planning stages, but we've, we've actually started, but we're still in the planning stage, and we're not in so deep that we can't make adjustments. So those are just some of those areas there. Now, this process, they've already talked about the freshman seminar, and some of the things they do as ninth graders, you know, and they talked about the youth, the youth science assessment, which is a critical, critical piece, because that assessment is very in-depth, it's very detailed, I think it takes like, what, a couple of hours, 90 minutes, or whatever it takes, and it really, it really gets into what students not only like, but also what their aptitude is. You may like something, but you don't have the aptitude for that. So to kind of match those up, and not only what it does, also it shows where those students, excuse me, where those careers are, where colleges are with those majors, and how much is going to cost them if it's beneficial to the parents. So they supported that, what they do in the ninth grade, in the career affairs and college visits. Now, you can visit a college, you don't have to go all the way to Athens, Georgia, or you don't have to go all the way to Atlanta, Georgia, if you want to go there, it's fine. But we've got colleges right here. What's wrong with Wiregrass, what's wrong with South Georgia College, what's wrong with Aback, what's wrong with Nevada State, what's wrong with South Georgia, Georgia Southwestern? Great, great, great schools, as well as Georgia, Georgia Tech, and the University of Kansas. So, so we just, we just want to get those students, I mean, those individuals into our campuses, and get our students out of our campuses to see what a college is like. Because like we said earlier, some of our students now have no idea what that is like, going to a college campus.
Excuse me, Mr. Morris, would you like a retort?
I agree.
That'll come later.
Do it for you, really.
But, but they have no idea, and one of the things the superintendent said when we went up there to Metro Nashville, for students to be it, they must see it. For them to be it, they must see it, and I don't need to see it on the, on the computer or, or, or what, they need to be on that campus and feel the pulse of a college environment. And we get, and we do have colleges coming here to visit, you know, and talk to students, but it's not the same thing. To be there and watch those students going on their business, you know, handling their business, going to classes, and, and, you know, I think that's great for our students to be introduced to. Now, that is part of this pyramid, it's based, that's where they can introduce to all of that, that's the goal. In the 10th grade year, they're to have business-related field trips, and guest speakers come into the schools, and our business and industry leaders come in and talk about what they're looking for in a potential employee. Some of the things they're looking for, some of the same things we're talking about, hopefully some of the same things that they learned in ninth grade in that freshman seminar, about being on time, about working well with others, about, you know, doing what you're asked to do, come and work prepared. Those things that a lot of us take for granted, that sometimes our students are not necessarily taught that in their home, so we have to try to do the best, best we can to help them develop those skills. And so, and also with these speakers coming in, we're asking for their help and their cooperation to help us develop this workforce. Now, it's real easy to be out there and saying, well, I don't have any qualified employees, I don't have any qualified employees, here's an opportunity for you to play a vital and critical role in helping develop these employees who are going. So we have to work with part, as partners with our local business leaders, and that doesn't have to be the larger companies, that could be just small, two or three people operations, you know, then running a business is running a business. So, you know, we want to gain that knowledge from all of our businesses, we don't want to leave anyone out, we don't want to leave anyone, any business leader out, no matter how big or how small. Job shadowing by the 11th grade year, is the next step in that pyramid, have an opportunity for these young people to go out in the community and be on these jobs. I've heard a lot of people say, I wanted to be a nurse until I saw blood, and you won't know that until you're in that environment. You know, so I think it's important that our students have an opportunity to go out and shadow someone, you know, an educator, someone in the central office, get an idea of what it's like, that job is like. So if you've heard about it, you've had people from colleges come in and talk to you about it, you know, now here's an opportunity for you to go out and perhaps spend a day on that job, and get a feel for what that job entails. One of the things that was talked about when we went on the trip, which is interesting, one of the students said that they weren't going, they had, they had no intention of going into the career field in their academy, because they said they found out that they didn't like it. And there's nothing, there's great value in that. There was one parent in the video said, had they known that, and that student wouldn't have had two years in college pursuing something that they did not like. Because just think about all the times that parents spend money on colleges, the students going to college, and, you know, they're going to major in whatever, and they end up going in a totally different direction. I changed three times, but I'll be it with myself. I changed, I changed three, but, you know, it's going to happen. But I think it's important to be intentional, for young people to be intentional about the process that they're undergoing to choose a career path. Now, if you learn the process, you can apply that process to anything you do, you know, whether it be an engineer, an architect, a dentist, whatever, an educator, the process is very, very similar on how you get there. At the end of your 12th grade year, you top it off with a capstone project, where you're going to tie all of these things together, the career fairs, college visit, industry related, guest speakers, job shadowing, and you end up with, you know, with a capstone project during your senior year. Now, the next thing we're going to talk about is what do we want a graduate, when we think about a graduate of a Coffee High School, a graduate of the Coffee County school system. Now, we're going to take it for granted, we expect every young person to be able to read, comprehend, do mathematical computations, and express themselves verbally as well as in written form. But I think what employers are looking for, and I kind of, I, I ain't, it's not a ridiculous thought, I got this from somewhere, I can't remember where else I can't give it credit, but if we can have a Coffee High graduate that can think creatively, they can be a problem solver, and work well with others, if they can do those three things, if those three things a student could do when they leave Coffee High School, or Coffee County school system, they will be a success no matter what they do. Because all great thinking comes in groups, in groups, and you've got to be able to work with others, because very, 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 very few professors are you working by yourself. And even if you own your own business, you're not working by yourself, because you're working with your customers. And you've got to be creative. We want our young people to look at solving problems in a different way, because they do, they think differently. They think differently than we do. I was born when Eisenhower was president, you know, so they just think a lot differently. I'm not that old, but anyway, I was, I was born when Eisenhower was president.
Was that the four Lincoln, or after?
That was I. But, and, and if they, you know, if they can work well with others, we got to, we got to work well with other people, because just think about all jobs today, it's collaboration, collaboration, collaboration. So if we can teach our, teach our young people to do those three things, they're going to be a success no matter what they do. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody has about, about the process you described. So while I know I kind of fed you a lot in a short amount of time, but we're going to look at implementing the career academies at Coffee High School, not the next school year, but the following school year. And we're looking at implementing one at a time, so we can kind of learn from our mistakes, so we don't jump so far into the deep end of the pool, and then it's kind of hard to turn that ship around, because you've got everybody on board. So that, that, right now, that's the intent, that's the goal, the goal. Be happy to answer any questions.
What about that student that you said is in the academy, and they decide they don't want to do it?
That's a great question. They get one opportunity to change, they get one opportunity to change their mind, and that's a great question, because that was one of the things that they, they did up there in, up there in Nashville, because once, once we start this process, and we're not asking students to make a decision that he can't change, or can't redirect, like I said, it's more about the process than anything else, but you realize that they may change their minds, and so they all have an opportunity to do that. Now, that's not something we're going to encourage, because what we want to do, when they take that youth science assessment, because it's very, very involved, that they have a good idea of what direction they want to go. And, and then once they get into the program, you know, there's going to be certain electives, especially, because everybody's going to take math, everybody's going to take science, and, you know, go to the core, the core's not going to change. But what we're going to do, we're going to take a 1,300 high school, and bring it down into smaller units, like maybe 450 or 475, so now, not only will you be a student at Coffee High School, you'll be a student, you'll be a Coffee High School student, but you'll also be a member of the Health Science Academy, or the STEM Academy, or one of the other academies we have. So it has, has an opportunity to build much more of a sense of community with that student, thus hopefully lead to more engagement. Anybody else?
Thank you, Dr. Cummings.
No problem, thank you.
And we have Pam Smith here from the Career Academy.
Okay, as you know, we're in our sixth year as a career academy, we're located on one of us Georgia Technical College campuses. So our students see that every day, going in and out of the Technical College, and then they're walking distance, of course, to South Florida State College, and we have some students up there as well. You see on the PowerPoint, we participate in Get Wired, we participate in STEM and EM with Wiregrass Technical College, and then also Profair at South Florida, and we, we do some of those tours. So as, as you saw on the pyramid, from the way they do things in Nashville, we're already doing some of those things here in Coffee County. So our students are participating in the career fairs and college visits now. Industry-related field trips is one of those things. Our students are vetted to all the following industries, so they're able to see what's going on, and what job opportunities are available in Coffee County, as we prepare them to go get ready for work, whether that's through continuing their education at a state college, or the Technical College, or going straight to work. And then, as you see, we've got pictures of where our students are out, learning about the different industries and jobs available, and they're able to ask questions, and, and kind of get, get an idea of what they want to do, and maybe what path they want to take in college. Most of our students are in either the medical field or welding at this time. So we have about 389 classes being taken this semester, and about 68% of our students are participating in dual enrollment. So that's what we're doing now, and what we plan to do is partner with the freshman campus next year, so we have one career fair for all of our ninth grade students, so every student in Coffee County will get that opportunity. And also then maybe partner with the 10th grade students at the high school, with their academies, and participate in the industry tours together.[1637.93] So, we're not asking the industries to repeat the field trips and have one community effort.
But you're ba, I mean, you're basically already doing what we're trying to do at that high school. So, there's not really a lot of change.
For us, we do want to incorporate more of the job shadowing and the capstone. We're doing a lot of great promise partnership. A lot of our students participate in that program. But we do want to increase that with the job shadowing. And then also, the welding program has capstone, we'd like to increase that as well.
And the last slide of the presentation, we just had a picture of some of our high school students there with the robotics program. And, uh, the primary goal of the academy's approach is to enhance student engagement and performance in high school and provide them with skills and credentials needed to make a successful transition to further education and/or career, integrating relevant career themes. All right? There's no other questions? We'll move along. Thank y'all. Appreciate you being here, principals. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Satilla Regional Library Board of Trustees. We need to appoint someone to the library board. My intention was not to do that here tonight, but to tell all of you that we do need somebody to appoint to the library board trustees. If you have a name, somebody in mind, if you'll give it to me, and, and we'll submit that name to the library board to go in and get somebody appointed. All right?
And that can be anyone in the community or they just be employed at the school system or?
It can be anyone. Yes, sir. Policies. According to Georgia Code, we have to review the Board Code of Ethics each year and the Board Member Conflict of Interest. This has been loaded onto E-Board earlier this week, and you had a chance to review this prior to this meeting. But if you open up the Board Code of Ethics, you will find our policy that deals with the Board Code of Ethics. And I'm not going to read through this, but board members, you have gone through training through the Georgia School Board Association, and you've had updates on these policies along and along. So, uh, we're reviewing these policies tonight here as part of that process. And also, we have the Board Member Conflict of Interest Policy. Once again, you have reviewed this policy and training, and, and we have discussed this policy and, and other work sessions and such throughout the year at G S B A meetings. Are there any questions about these policies? And we will schedule a training session with the Georgia School Board Association over the next month to, uh, have a retreat and discuss more in-depth best practices in these two policies also. And I want to thank, thank you for your professionalism and your adherence to these policies. And I think y'all do a great job in both of those areas, and I appreciate it. Vehicle purchase. We have Officer Chris Elrod here with us tonight. Officer Elrod, you want to come forward and introduce yourself and tell them what we have on the agenda?
Oh, yeah. My name, if you don't know me, my name is Chris Elrod. Um, I am our school safety director, uh, have been, have accepted the challenge and, and doing, doing what I think we need to do. We've, uh, we've done our paperwork and we're waiting on the state at this point to create our agency, basically giving us powers of arrest on our school property. That also allows us to do our job on the school property. So, we're, we're working daily and working hard at it. We're trying to, we're trying to enhance our school system. And, and the, the goal of this position and, and what we're doing is, of course, to keep our kids safe. And, and that is, that is our number one goal.
Thank you. And Officer Elrod has been working towards, uh, purchasing a vehicle. And he has, uh, submitted to us a request, and I'm recommending that we purchase the Chevrolet Tahoe to serve as our safety, uh, director of school police vehicle. Are there any questions about that recommendation? Officer Elrod has been, um, uh, using a, a Durango, a Dodge Durango from the Sheriff Department. And they've been gracious enough to allow us to use it, but we're, we need to purchase our own vehicle.
He's going to repossess it at some point.
And please, thank the sheriff for allowing us.
I will, I will.
So, our recommendation is to purchase the Chevy Tahoe. We will use general funds. We have a, uh, in the maintenance line item, the transportation area, so we will use general funds to purchase, uh, the Chevy Tahoe. Next item on the agenda, we have, uh, school calendar proposals. I've presented to the board two calendars, and we're not going to make a decision here tonight. I'm not asking to make a decision, but I want to present them as information. Very similar calendars. Both of them start in school on August ninth for the students. But you can look at those calendars, and, and we'll come back together next month and discuss those calendars. And selection of two thousand nineteen Board of Educational Officers. We need two second motions.
You can, you can make the nomination as a single motion. Sid, I'm sorry, Mr. Cunningham. You can make the motion for a nomination in, in, for both seats at one time.
Yes, sir. Can you point out who that is?
Mr. Reagan Miller, Board Chair for next year, and Ms. Adala, the Vice Chair.
We've got a motion for Ms. Miller to be Chair, Mr. Flott to be Vice Chair. In a second. I'm second. You can, you can actually nominate yourself.
I will.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Well, I'd like to say how much I've appreciated everyone's confidence in me to serve as Chair this past year. And, uh, again, we get slid every year. Now I get handed off.
Well, I'd like to say thank you, Ms. Press, for serving, appreciating what you've done for the Board of Education and, uh, had a good year and look forward to working with, uh, Ms. Miller and Mr. Rock.
I appreciate it too, Brian. I know there's a, there's a lot of extra work that you don't see that goes in that seat that you have to do, and I appreciate you taking that this year and taking care of it and did a good job. Always have. Uh, I appreciate you all the work.
We need to vote both. All in favor?
All right. At this time, we will have audience participation. There's no audience participation tonight, and I would ask the board that we move to an executive session to discuss personnel and the employment, employment compensation, hiring, disclosure action, or dismissal, periodic evaluation, or rating of a public officer or employee.
Please, a motion. I'm sorry. Board Chair.
Do you have a motion? Second? In discussion? We'll exit to executive session. I mean, uh, how do you say, executive session?
So, man.
In discussion? And we turn to executive session then?